So council, we're going to reconvene this public hearing of Thursday, October 29th. Before proceeding, we want to announce, of course, that we're transitioning from audio only to testing video of council on live stream. So we'll just see how that works and we'll take a few meetings to get it perfect. But I think this is a request of lots of folks that we try to get on video online. So for the purposes of confirming we have quorum and to allow the live streaming, please ensure your video is turned on. This meeting is convened by electronic meetings under M192 and just ask councillors to mute until they're, until you're ready to speak, just to cut down background noise. We're all participating by phone under this M192 order. If our connection is lost during any portions of the meeting, we'll recess until the meeting, until the connection is restored. So just, please let us know if you are going to leave the meeting at any time, so we can check to make sure that we maintain quorum. Members of the public can listen to and view the proceedings via live stream and YouTube link, which are tweeted out on @VanCityClerk. Presentations, amendments, and vote results were projected to viewers when available. Clerks, can we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Mayor Stewart in the chair. Councillor Carr?
Here.
Councillor De Genova?
Present.
Councillor Fry?
Here.
Councillor Swanson?
Here.
Councillor Hardwick?
Present.
Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle?
Present.
Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Councillor Bly?
Present.
And Councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. First, we acknowledge around the traditional unceded territories of the Musqueens, Gloungs, and Slavetooth people, and thank them for having care for these lands and their generosity towards all of us. And I think I speak on behalf of all council that how much we enjoyed meeting, at least virtually, with Slavetooth leadership the other night, and look forward to doing so with the other local nations. Also want to take some time to thank staff for the great work they're doing, and especially during COVID-19. Just one second, please. Thanks, council. Let's see, so the public is strongly urged to listen to proceedings via the city's website or YouTube link and follow along @VanCityClerk for updates. So we're a quasi judicial body here today, which means we're only to consider the merits of the rezoning application. So council members may ask clarifying questions from staff at this stage and should save debate for after the close of, after we move the motion. Once we move the motion, we can either, one, approve the principle, approve and principal the application, two, refuse the application, or three, defer the application for further consideration. Yesterday, we concluded from hearing from speakers on item seven, CD1 rezoning of 3743 West Broadway, and closed the receded public comments. So now, we're moving on to closing comments from the applicant, closing comments from staff, another round of questions to staff by council if you desire, and then on to debate and decision. I believe the applicant has a short presentation they'd like to use for their closing comments, and so I'll turn it over to the applicant to proceed with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council, staff, members of the community. My name is Farouk Baboul, and I'm with West Bank. As you know, there are no easy solutions to solving the housing supply and affordability crisis in Vancouver. This isn't an East Van problem, or a downtown problem, or a can be corridor problem, to name a few. It's a Vancouver problem, and we, the stewards of our great city, must work together to ensure that every neighborhood, including Point Grade, Kitlato, does their part in accommodating the needs of our current and future residents. We, as developers with the support of staff and council, must work together with the community to find these balanced solutions for the entire housing continuum. And as the case may be here, the solutions can often be tough and uncomfortable. The comments heard yesterday aren't those that we haven't heard before. We hold hardly belief that, through the staff review and community consultation process, we have adequately addressed the concerns raised as best we can. There's no easy or perfect solution. As you know, the intention of the MERP policy is to prioritize and to work together as a community to address housing supply and affordability for the middle-income households of our city. I stress the importance of the immediate need because unless the results of the policy is implemented through our city, we can't help solve the problem. We sincerely believe that this proposal addresses the criteria of your policy. The site is underutilized, the site is on an arterial road, the site is on the busiest rapid bus route in Canada, and the site does not displace any existing renters. This site is primed for redevelopment, and we wholeheartedly believe that the proposal is the right thing to do for this community and our city. Additionally, I wanted to clarify the financing model proposed here. When I told you that we'd be approaching BC Housing to finance the project, I didn't describe the program sufficiently for council, which was my mistake. We are one of BC Housing's largest partners in building and financing rental housing. Should the project be approved by council, we would apply for construction financing through BC Housing's Provincial Rental Supply Program. A criterion of this program is that the entire building be for middle-income households. The rents assessed at occupancy would be based on household incomes being less than the 75th percentile. For this project specifically, this translates to 20% of the units at MERP rates, which are at a deep level of affordability, about half that of the market rents in this neighborhood. The 80% balance are for middle-income households, and the rents would be income-driven. The rents for those units would be higher than MERP, but, in general, lower than market. Essentially, the 50 to 70 basis point savings in construction financing would result in the savings being passed down to the future middle-income residents at reduced rent. To clarify, it's financing and not additional funding or capital grants for this project by the city, and the BC Housing financing would not detract from city funding for other projects that target deeper levels of affordability. I'd like to turn it over to Michael Leckie, who's prepared a few closing comments.
Thank you, Farouk. Would it be possible to ask the clerk to please pull up the slide deck that we sent earlier today?
Sure thing.
Thank you. In response to some of the questions that came from council last, sorry, the day before, no, last night, and also some of the comments from the public, we just wanted to take a minute and just review some of the revisions that were made to the design following UDP approval, based on the comments from planning as well as the general public. You can see here on the first slide, we have the original rezoning application, and there were primarily five comments that came back from the general public. The first was that the design aesthetic appeared too institutional. There were questions about the materiality, the fin matrix. The second was that the fin matrix adds bulk to the building, and that it was decreasing the porosity and the connection between the exterior and the interior of the building. The third one was the-
Wouldn't it privilege? Sorry, it's Swanson here. Could I get some tech help?
Go ahead.
I'm not seeing the slides.
Okay, they're on the orange cone, if that's helpful to you.
Yeah, I'm clicking on the orange cone and nothing is happening.
Okay, I'll get the tech team to call you. Please continue, presenter.
The, the third point was that the fin matrix was enclosing the balcony, which was not only resulting in the necessity to count this in the FSR calculation, but that it was going to impact the quality of life of the residents of the building. Lastly, on the fin matrix, that it was obstructing the visibility at both the glazing and the balcony. And finally, that the building appeared to be taller than 14 stories. Next slide, please. To respond to these comments one by one, regarding the fin matrix, we studied several options for the spacing and density of fins, which were intended to not only mediate aspects of privacy, solar gain, and the relationship and life of the interior and the residents against the exterior of the building and the community. In the end, we decided that in order to keep the strength of the project, it was best to remove the fin matrix altogether. And in doing so, we were able to decrease the apparent bulk of the building, we were able to open up the balconies, and we were able to reimagine the building facade and the structured nature of the units, and create more of a porous interface between what was happening inside the building and the city beyond. With regard to the height, that the building appears to be taller than 14 stories, we reduced the extension of the fin matrix that was leading up an extra story and was going around the amenity rooftop area. And we also made subtle shift to the massing, which I'll talk about in a minute. Next slide, please. In this slide, and I apologize that the print is so small, there's a fair amount of information here, but really what you can see on the second last column to the right is that in almost every instance, we were able to increase the setbacks from what we had originally shown in the rezoning application. And it was only in two instances, in the second volume from the top, where we had the setback moving just a little bit further to the west, and the third volume from the top, where the setback decreased just a little bit to the north. Next slide, please. This rendering shows the character of the ground plane and the idea of the overhang providing shelter and interface for the sidewalk and the pedestrian life of the city, as well as the degree of transparency and operability that we're proposing to revitalize this neighborhood corner. Next slide, please. There was a question about the number of CRUs that we're proposing on the ground floor. Here you can see, we are currently showing four CRUs, as well as the potential at the top right corner of the floor plan for a future connection to public transit. Along the left or west side of the project, we are providing ground-oriented, family-oriented townhomes. And I would also like to reiterate that there is an unprecedented amount of bicycle infrastructure in this project. Not only are we providing dedicated bicycle lifts to service the covered and secured bicycle parking spaces down below, we are also providing a dedicated bike share program for the residents of this project on the ground floor, and in addition to allocation of space for a public bike share program that is indicated by the shaded area at the bottom left of the floor plan. Next slide, please. Here you can see side by side the original proposal and the redesigned proposal. And I would like to just comment, while we leave this on the screen, on a few closing remarks. I first like to thank the Honorable Mayor and council, as well as staff, for their commitment to creating a forum for meaningful discussion and public discourse around the project. I'd like to also thank all the speakers for their questions, opinions, and thoughtful input last night, all in a community effort to create an engaged and balanced discourse regarding the future of this site, this neighborhood, and our city. Rather than look backward at lower density, sprawling urban development forms that has characterized the city throughout the last 50 to 100 years, or middle forms of density that are more appropriate for mid-block arterial sites, we must instead be forward-looking with forms of development on significant urban nodal sites that will support the growth of the city for the next 50 to 100 years. The question of contextual fit is very specifically related not only to place, but to time. Ten years ago, a six-story building on this site would have been strongly opposed by the community as wildly out of context. Today, the majority of those opposed to the project are suggesting that a six-story building would be welcomed outright on this site. What about five years from now, 10 years from now, 50 years from now? I will suggest that it's these future timeframes that we should be considering here and evaluating this proposal. Neighborhood residents have commented that the 14-story tower is unprecedented and out of character for the neighborhood, and yet there's a 12-story residential tower two blocks away on Alma that was developed in the early 1970s. And while it was correctly noted that this precedent project amounts to a considerably less form of density than the proposed development in question, my question for you, council, is this: should we really be handcuffing our assessment of this proposal by comparing it to similar forms of development in this neighborhood from 50 years ago? Our proposed site, also on Alma, is substantially more prominent and more appropriate for a tower form of development than this other existing site that's located two blocks to the north. And this is because it sits at the intersection of Alma and Broadway, arguably one of the most prominent and most important streets in our city, and certainly from a public transportation point of view. There's been some discussion about the relationship between this development and the future Sky Train, and importance of this transportation artery in our city. To put the conversation in context here, the Broadway Beeline bus route is the busiest, most-traffic bus route in any city in both Canada and the United States. Allow me to say this again. It's the busiest bus route in any city in both Canada and the United States. The average daily ridership is over 50,000 passengers per day, amounting to over 18 million rides per year. One of the key points from those opposed to the project is that West 8th Avenue is not a major arterial street west of Alma. And while I agree with this observation, I feel that it is more relevant to note that this site is at the west terminus of Broadway, the busiest public transportation artery in the city. And so the real question here is, if not here, then where? If we are not building density at clearly defined nodes along the busiest transit route in the country, then where? If we are not building density in neighborhoods where we have the lowest density in the entire city and the, and small businesses are struggling, if not here, then where? We need to look past the anti-development rhetoric and find a balanced solution to appropriately plan the future of the city. We need to place the benefit of the majority ahead of the interests of the minority. We need to provide housing for the missing middle, and in doing so, we must consider higher-density rental forms that support the affordable, diverse, and inclusive forms of housing that are going to provide opportunities for all Vancouver residents to live across all Vancouver neighborhoods. Again, council, respectfully, my question that I will leave you with is this: if not here, then where?
Thanks so much for your comments. Now, any closing question, any closing comments from staff?
Hi there, it's Carly Rosenblatt from rezoning. We did receive a number of questions that I can go over today and provide an answer for. So, one of the first questions we've received was to ask for an explanation from staff about how to determine how much extra height is awarded to a developer to achieve the MERP goal of a minimum of 20% of the floor area in secured moderate income units. And in response to this, the MERP policy allows for 14 stories to be considered, and this came out of an early analysis to assess the cost to secure below-market and market rental units. As mentioned yesterday in the staff presentation, each MERP project is required to submit a pro forma, which is then assessed by the city's real estate division to determine if there is any land left being generated. It was determined that the cost to secure the below-market unit with the likes of the building does not generate any land left. The next question we received said, given that the previous proposal had 94 rental units in six stories, what might account for the fact that this application with eight more stories has only 67 more units? The initial rezoning project came in under the Rental 100 program, and that was for secured market rental units only. The project did not contain any below-market units. The cost to secure these below-market units is very significant, which requires the extra density to cover those costs. The question was also asked, how can a private developer receive BC Housing financing? And I'll turn this over to my colleague Annie Mobley to respond to.
Thank you, Carly. It's Annie Mobley, senior planner for housing. There was a question regarding the involvement of BC Housing, and so I'd just like to share that, in fact, both government housing agencies, so that's BC Housing and CMHC, do provide low-cost financing to private developers for rental housing, and it comes along with some modest affordability requirements, mostly to ensure that the projects target the middle-income households, which is a priority focus for the MERP program. It might be that council is more familiar with BC Housing's involvement in the delivery of social housing. In that case, in those kinds of projects, the funding is actually grant funded. So the financing is also an option, and for the MERP project, as an example, the for-profit developers do seek financing from both CMHC and BC Housing. So it comes through a mortgage, and that mortgage must be paid back with interest. It's just really a lower interest rate than what you would see in a conventional construction or takeout loan. And the goal there for both BC Housing and CMHC is to try to address and support projects that target that middle-income household range, which is what the MERP is doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Annie. And there's several more questions that we'd like to cover as well. So one of them asked, is Broadway west of Alma still considered a commercial street despite all the residential development and main arterial switching to 10th Avenue at Alma? The four corners of the intersection of Broadway and Alma are commercial and arterial in nature. While Broadway changes to more residential character west of the intersection, the subject site is accessed off of two arterial streets. Users access the site from these areas. Another question that we received said, what are the criteria used by staff to determine neighborhood fit? Staff consider both the local context with adjacent properties and the larger neighborhood context. The existing context includes a mix of residential areas, pedestrian-oriented shopping areas, and frequent transit service. To achieve neighborhood fit, the applicant has designed the building to shift the bulk of the massing towards the commercial intersection, away from the lower-scale residential fabric. The western edge of the building has been set back by approximately 10 feet and provides a residential interface with townhouse units and a reduced height of four stories. Under existing CT district, a typical development may be a four-story mixed-use building with a maximum height of 45 feet. There's also grade-level commercial units, which are set back from the property line by approximately 20 feet from the curb. This helps facilitate opportunities for outdoor seating and dining in an active public realm that creates opportunities for neighborhood socialization. Neighborhood fit is also assessed on what is anticipated to take place. With the current planning process underway for the Jericho lands, located just one block to the northwest, and the future Sky Train station proposed, the area is expected to change significantly in the coming years. Another question said, staff included the taller building two blocks away as indicative of neighborhood fit. Speakers various, excuse me, speakers variously referred to that building as 12 stories, 13 stories, 11 to 12 stories, and about 10 stories. What is the actual height of this building in feet? Speaker said it was part of a city pilot project. What was the aim of the pilot project, and what was the subsequent outcome in terms of zoning or other planning measures? The building we referred to is at 3707 West 7th Avenue, two blocks north of the site, and it's 12 stories in height. It was built in 1970 and contains 86 rental units. We do not have drawings for the buildings to provide an exact height, however, based on typical floor-to-floor heights of the time, it is estimated the floors are approximately eight and a half to nine feet in height, with a slightly taller ground floor level. Based on those assumptions, the building is estimated to be approximately 100 to 110 feet in height. As Alma slopes down towards the beach, the north side of the building may appear taller. The building also preceded the existing RMP zoning, and is considered a least non-conforming site. Staff are not aware of a city pilot program to develop the building, however, it may have been through federal funding at the time. In the early 1970s, there was significant tax incentives in place to encourage the development of private market rental housing. However, the details of this specific building and how it was financed is not available. Another question asked, would staff expect to proceed with a station precinct plan should the Broadway subway extension proceed and a subway station be located in the vicinity of Broadway and 10th Avenue in Alma? Yes, a station precinct plan could occur as either part of the Broadway plan or perhaps the Vancouver plan may take, may make provisions for this. Another question that came in had to do with a financial assessment that was received from a member of the public, and staff were asked to comment on, on the assessment. So I'll turn this over to my colleague Michael Chin to respond to.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This is Michael Chin, manager of property development and real estate, on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. The city does not comment on the accuracy on financial assumptions submitted by the public. However, I can offer a few general comments from the email. Number one, land valuation. When real estate reviews an applicant's pro forma, the evaluation date for the land is set at the time of application, and the existing land value is valued at that point in time. This way, we treat all applicants exactly the same, whether they have the land for a long time or they just required, acquired the property recently. Number two, state something about one underground parking, one level of underground parking. Parking relaxation is intended to provide a development cost savings to improve financial viability of rental projects. This incentive, available for Rental 100 and MERP projects, are required for developers to achieve a viable rental project. So, the one level of underground parking was factored into the overall construction costs and has been factored into the pro forma. Overall windfall profit- Overall windfall profit, the Real Estate Division has reviewed the applicant's development pro forma in accordance with industry standards and the city's protocol, and determined that after factoring in the 32 income, 32 moderate income units and the cost of building the secured rental building, there is no additional profit beyond the standard 15% profit margin, and therefore, there is no windfall profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And there's a few additional questions that we'd like to respond to as well. One of the questions asked, "If we can ensure that the project aims to have over 100 trees up from the 86 new trees that the applicant said, however, less than the 109 proposed in the rezoning report." The final number of trees will be determined through the development permit stage. And lastly, we received a question asking if it's possible to remove the mezzanine level one of the development to ensure community-serving retail spaces with minimum changes to the affordable rental. And I'll turn this over to my colleague Pat Chan to respond to.
This is Pat Chan. So, we would sort of add a condition to that amendment to... Yeah, it can be reduced. That will be, that said, reducing the mezzanine floor doesn't mean we'll take up a full 10 feet floor, because we will still expect a commercial retail unit to sort of maintain roughly about a 15 to 18 feet floor-to-floor height for sort of usability, livability of the commercial floor. Counsel?
Thank you, Pat. Those are all the questions that staff have received. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we do have now, council, we have questions to staff only, of course, at this point, and I have a number of councillors on the list, starting with councillor Dejanova. Up to five minutes, please.
It's a privilege. Sorry, just to interrupt. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, no problem at all.
My whole question panel has just disappeared, Mr. Mayor. Wonder if I could get remote help?
Okay, sure. I'll get the clerks to do that for you and continue on with councillor Dejanova. Please go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Question to staff, appreciate all of that clarification from the applicant. Understand I can't ask the applicant questions, but looking at B.C. Housing's documents on their website, this would still have to meet their lending criteria requirements to apply for construction financing. Is that correct?
Yes, it's Annie Mobley's here, Senior Housing Planner. You're right. Typically, how the financing works is the applicant needs to secure a successful approval through public hearing as the first step, and then as they move and proceed through the development permit process is the time that they engage with B.C. Housing, CMHC to secure the details of financing. And so, they would have to meet the requirements of whichever financing tools they're seeking of either B.C. Housing or CMHC. Our, the MRRP requirements, of course, would be secured through a housing agreement as part of the city process.
Okay, so what I also see in here is for private developers is as it's been noted that there's a very different structure for nonprofits, and as there is for private developers who are able to secure this financing, they would still need to meet certain income levels for the other 80%. So, B.C. Housing would have to, by way of their rental supply, a housing document here that looks at B.C. Housing contributions for construction, they would need to meet affordable rates for the other 80%, correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. And then going above and beyond that, it says B.C. Housing would expect that the units be affordable for at least 10 years. The MRRP on top of the B.C. Housing construction financing and under the covenant would actually make that 20% in perpetuity under a vacancy control model. Is that correct?
Correct. The housing agreement secures those units for 60 years, life of the building through a housing agreement.
Okay, so our program in some ways is held to a higher standard than B.C. Housing's, but this is still meeting their criteria, which is very specific and that not all private developers can meet. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it is in part to meet the provincial targets around delivering rental housing, just like the city has. The provincial also has that, trying to incentivize the delivery of rental because of the low vacancy that we're finding across the city and across the province.
Okay, thanks so much. And just looking in the neighborhood and understanding this in reading the report, is there an overwhelming amount of rental supply, I suppose rental stock, you know, that offers this type of family housing? What are the vacancy rates? Can you remind me specifically in this neighborhood?
Yeah, we, I definitely can. I actually worked for last several years for Kits West Point Gray. It was a low of .6 in 2016 and is now up at .9%. And if I can just remind, Mayor and Council, a healthy vacancy rate is 3%. And so, effectively, what that means is that there are just nine units out of 1,000 available for people who are seeking an apartment rent in this part of the city, and it was a city average vacancy rate of 1%. So, there's definitely a need in this part of the city.
Okay, and then just thank you very much, just noting these down as we go along here. B.C. Housing, just back to the financing model, can you just clarify or confirm for me? With B.C. Housing construction financing, the affordability that's brought to this through MRRP, the applicant is able to currently build, build what on this land the council could not dictate affordability over? They still would be able to build housing here? Is that correct if this rezoning application didn't move forward and we may not see the same affordability? Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah, if I'm understanding your question.
I'm trying to be brief as I don't have very much time left, so. So, they could still move forward with a building form that doesn't have this affordability? Is that correct?
Oh, I see, like if they are not able to... Yes, I mean, it would have to determine that post-public hearing, and that's the work that they'll do should they get approval at this stage.
Okay, I'm happy to go on the end of the queue, Mr. Mayor. I know we do it by, usually by just calling out, but to move the motion if that's helpful, considering our new system is a bit sensitive, I understand as well. But I'll go back on the queue. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thanks. Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes?
Yeah, thank you, and I'll try to focus in on questions that have been addressed by staff so far. Just kind of a quick context question for the MRRP program. I understand it's limited to 20 projects and concludes in January 2021. I'm wondering which number this is of the MRRP projects that have been approved to date?
Hi, Carly Rosenblatt from rezoning. This is the 10th project under the MRRP program to be considered.
Okay, so about halfway through that pilot initiative, and this program will be evaluated post. I know there's been a lot of, and I have that question because I know there's been a lot of feedback about sort of the financial benefits of this program, but currently, we are in the evaluation stage and the pilot project stage. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and halfway through in terms of approved projects?
Yes, that's also correct.
Okay. In terms of, you know, on that vein, and there's a lot of discussion, feedback that we heard from the public around various descriptors, whether it was termed allowances or subsidies to developers in doing this and the sort of the $5 million number, I wonder if you can provide some context and clarity around that subsidy is not specifically just for the affordable units, but also supports the building of rental versus strata overall as it's more financially challenging to deliver that housing form? Is that correct? That the subsidies provide both direction in terms of encouraging a housing type, but then also, in this case, the 20% perpetually affordable units?
Thank you for your question. I'll turn this over to my colleague Michael Chin to respond to.
Hello, it's Michael Chin here. So, yes, the pro forma actually has the moderate income units factored into the pro forma. So, therefore, that number that was provided is that if it was strictly market rental, then therefore, there would be a CAC involved. But this one, because there's no, because that the rent, the moderate income units, because the rent is so low, that offsets the density provided. That answers your question.
So, that's predominantly where the waiving of the fees is being directed toward, correct?
That's correct. It's not waived of the CAC, it's where it's offset by the construction of the rental building plus the lowering of the rents of the MRRP units.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'm going to move on to the question that I posed last night, and I know staff that they would look it up, and it was with respect to sidewalks. And I just want to expand on that question. I was looking for the sidewalk width, not just including the private setback, but the public space, and also how that fits into our new policy of requiring widened sidewalks. And then my second part on sidewalks is that staff had commented that there may, I wrote this down, the word used, be widened sidewalks, curbs, and improved lighting. So, can you get some clarity on if that will happen to improve this intersection experience overall? So, two-part question there.
Thank you for your question. I'll turn this over to my engineering colleague Rosemary Drossick.
So, councillor Kirby, I think I missed the first part of your engineering question was the timing of when some of those public realm hours...
The first part was actually, no, the first part was actually, just clarify, was actually related to the sidewalk width overall and how that fits with our new policy for wider sidewalks and with the ability to provide wider passage for pedestrians, a better public realm experience, space for use like dining, things of that nature.
Hi, councillor. This is Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner. I'll answer the first part of your question.
Thank you.
There was some, no problem. There was some comparison with the particular sidewalks, sidewalk experience in front of the project we know as the Parthenon, and that's located at 375 West Broadway, we believe. That one does have a pretty enhanced sidewalk width that is measuring around 20 to 22 feet of overall width. That's a really good width. While our basic standard for commercial fronted streets these days for sidewalks is a minimum of 18 feet, the 20 to 22 feet allows for extra patio life in front of storefronts and definitely a more comfortable realm for pedestrians to be walking leisurely along the sidewalk.
And what is this project? I have quite run out of time. I have to come back.
This particular project is even more. It's 22 to 26 feet, depending on what part of the building we're talking about, along the Broadway sidewalk.
That's up to five minutes?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you. I have three questions. The first is kind of an obvious one, is one of the MRRP requirements is that these occur at the intersection of two arterials. Are you seriously suggesting that these are two arterials at this corner?
Over to staff.
Thank you for your question. So, under the MRRP policy guidelines, for several eligible zoning districts, including the C2 site, additional height and density refers to sites at arterial intersections. This means sites that include the corner lot at the intersection of two arterial roads. There's further interpretation that sites that include the corner lot at the intersection of two roads, where only one of which is an arterial road, may be eligible for some additional height and density, commensurate with site size, context, and other considerations. And...
And furthermore, this is Paul Chang, I just wanted to add to that, so that particular answer. Wanted to remind council that another project in the MRRP program that has been approved by council has a very similar type of intersection where one of the streets is an arterial, East Hastings, and the other street is actually a residentially classified street, and that would be Kootenay. So, I'm speaking of 3,600 East Hastings, which is also a MRRP project that council has adopted. So, just wanted to mention that so that we understand that...
Right. So, we've established a precedent so that the rules that we set don't apply because of another precedent. So, I think the answer is it's, I think we know that the arterial shifts up to 10th Avenue as it goes out to University for anyone familiar with the area. Let me go on to my second question. The value of the property has gone down $5.5 million, over 22% in the last year. How does this affect the pro forma? I heard your statements earlier, but I'd like a clear explanation of why this is not an important consideration.
Thank you for your question. Again, I'll turn this over to my colleague Michael Chin.
Hello, it's Michael Chin here again. I assume you're referring to B.C. assessment data on the valuation of it going down?
Yes.
Yes, so as I've indicated, the valuation of the land in the pro forma is as when the application is submitted. So, therefore, the B.C. assessment, obviously, they follow trends and they have mass appraisal. So, our valuation of the property, the valuation of the land may not coincide with their valuation of their land. So, I guess the simple explanation is we value it at the point in time, their valuation is set for, I believe, midpoint July of each year, so...
So, when was that? When are you basing that on, if not on the current year?
No, we are basing it on as when the valuation of the land is when the submission of the application was submitted.
And when was that?
I believe 2019.
Okay, so the 22% decline in the assessed value is not material because you're not keeping, you're looking at when it came in, not in the current scenario?
That's correct. That's correct.
Then finally, I'd like to have a little bit more detail on how we're supposed to make a decision when we, we need to really understand that the amount in CACs and DCLs that we are giving up in this case. I'd like a further explanation of the rationale here.
I'm not, I'm not getting the question because the valuation, we have...
No, I'm on valuation, I'm on to the CAC and DCL question. In terms of what we're giving up, because these two are materially connected.
The 32 rent, MRRP, moderate income units have offset the density provided and the...
To the tune of X number of dollars.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, X equals 5 million? X equals what?
No, the, again, it's difficult to answer because, as I said, the pro forma, all the costs of the 32 units and the cost of building the project has all been factored into the pro forma, and the net land lift is zero.
Thanks. That's the five minutes. Councillor Swanson? Might be on mute, Councillor Swanson? Councillor Swanson, you might want to unmute there.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can. Please go ahead.
Okeydoke. So, my questions are about the affordability of the 80% of units that aren't the MRRP units. The applicant said that they would be, that B.C. Housing required that they be for moderate income people, and so I'm wondering from staff if you can tell me what the definition of moderate income is for this purpose?
Sure, I can answer that. Annie Mobley, Senior Housing Planner. I know that the applicant did talk about that, and we did discuss earlier in previous questions, the B.C. Housing financing. And so, our understanding is that the applicant, should they be successful with the public hearing process and be able to move to a DP, would be seeking that provincial rental supply program financing from B.C. Housing, and as part of that financing, they would effectively be looking for a mortgage. B.C. Housing would require that the 80% of this project, not the 20%, but that 80% market rental, would be available for people of moderate income. And so, and I think as we've already talked about, there's usually a time... And so, and, and, and I think as we've already talked about, there's usually a time limit, depending on the term of the mortgage, 10 years, that the project would need to meet the incomes of, of moderate income households.
So my, my question is, what's their definition of moderate income?
It's usually based on households being less than what we call the 75th percentile of income, so it is, it, it's similar to what we would have as part of our MERP gross household income requirements, between $30,000 and $80,000 annually, but it is time limited based on the term of the mortgage.
What? That doesn't make, it's not between 30 and 80,000, is it? For the 80%?
Yeah. I mean, I, I would probably need to follow up. I, I'm not entirely sure which financing they'll be trying to seek for the project. It's really something that happens after the public hearing, and there are a lot of different rental supply financing tools out there. But typically, what it means for this project is that for that 80% of the units, they would not, as part of that mortgage, be charged the full market rent. Exactly what those rents are, we would have to probably follow up with specific details for you.
So I was just looking at the B.C. Housing website, and it was saying that their definition of moderate income is, is in the 75th percentile for families, so for a two-bedroom, the, the 75th percentile, and they include owners, I guess, in their percentile, it couldn't be that they're including just renters. It was 155K.
Okay.
And so the rent for those would be 3815, or 3875 for a two-bed.
Yeah.
For 10 years, and then they could raise it to whatever they like? Is, is that, does that sound reasonable? Like, what is actually going to be happening here?
Yeah, I mean, it would depend on the term of their mortgage. Typically, it is 10 years, and then once, once they're that satisfied, and then B.C. Housing requirements are finished because the mortgage is paid off, they could step to the market. Although, one of the things that we always talk about with, with rental is that as the stock gets older, it becomes more affordable compared to a brand-new unit that's going to be constructed 10 years from now. And so, you know, the average market rents in this part of the city, as you said, for a three-bedroom is about $3,800, whereas the MERP units, the 20% of this project, a three-bedroom would rent at $2,000. And so there's, there's a big difference, of course, between the 20% floor area for the city's requirements and for the MERP pilot compared to that market.
So, but what I'm, the point I'm trying to get at is, if it's seven, if it's moderate income, their definition of moderate income is 155,000 a year for a household, is that your understanding?
Yeah, it, it sounds like that, that is what it is. It's higher than what we would consider as part of the MERP. But like I said, there are different kinds of financing tools, and I don't know the details of them well enough to, to be able to speculate, but we could follow up and provide that if it's necessary.
Now we're at the five.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Dejanova, you've had your full five, so.
Yeah, I was just on to move the motion. I can't take myself off, so sorry, Mr. Mayor. If you can add me when appropriate, that would be great.
Sure. Councilor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you so much. I do have a follow-up question. Thank you, staff, for answering the questions that I had submitted yesterday, you did that at the top. But there's one question that I don't understand out of that, or sorry, one answer that I don't understand to my question, and that was my question number two, about the number of units in the earlier application versus this one. I don't still understand how the, or why the six-story proposal had 94 rental units, so six stories, 94 units, but this application added eight stories more, and only 67 more units. So the answer around initial one, having a rental 100 applica, had no below-market units, did not make sense to me. I just want to know why there are so many fewer units per floor, especially because the MERP units seem to be quite small units. I mean, are the units proposed in this, maybe for the upper floors, much larger, and that's why there's so many fewer per floor?
Hi, Councilor, this is Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner. I think the first part of my answer is that while there are eight more stories on top of the six-story version, we, it's not necessarily emulated as the same floor space and floor plates that the six-story version had. As, when we look at this particular project, we can see that the upper stories that are above the six stories are much smaller in overall floor space size compared to the, the one, the, the lower stories, which cover most of the site. So it is a slenderer tower floor plate as we go up to the upper stories, so we don't necessarily gain double the amount of units, even though the height is doubled or a little bit more than doubled. I hope that clarifies why.
That, yeah, that's much clearer. So, so the floor, the, the size of the floors themselves, the floor, each floor plate is much smaller. And can I assume that if that's the reason, then it's not because the units are much larger?
It is not because the, the, it's not because the units, the, the MERP units are much smaller. That's not the, that's not the reason why there are, there isn't a, a double of number of units, for instance.
Okay, thank you. That's great. That's fine for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Councilor Delano, up to five.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, a couple of follow-up questions. Just going to, I think, your initial presentation the other evening, you talked about the pilot program, that there's the existing Broadway interim zoning policy in place, not permitting development west of Vine, I think. And, and I'm just wanting to clarify that in terms of conforming to policy, because I, I think that's one of the things I heard very clearly from residents in, in recent days around the scene, being seen as a spot rezoning, not aligning with existing visions, is, I seem to recall you mentioned something about that the interim zoning policy did permit affordable housing or secured market rental. It is, does that, is that where sort of the policy compliance comes in? Is that it fits within that interim rezoning policy?
Thank you for your question. Carly Rosenblatt here. Yes, that, that is correct, that there is the option to have affordable and secured market rental within the Broad, within the interim Broadway corridor.
Okay, thank you.
And this, this section in particular.
Okay, and that's, okay. And then secondly, specifically with the, the previous, under the rental 100, there was no Bellocum market component here, we have at least 21, 20%, and that is, is rent controlled essentially? Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's correct. The, that one did not contain any below-market rental units.
Okay. And, and then to the question around the guidelines with respect to MERP, I want to pick up a question that Councilor Hardwick raised about arterials. A, a number of residents also raised issue of Broadway and Alma being arterials, and I'm, I'm looking at your current engineering design manual, and it references that arterials are primarily for people movement. Major arterials have multiple lanes, but it seems to distinguish between that not necessarily every arterial is a major arterial. And I'm just wondering if you could clarify the definitions of arterials in the context of, of these two intersecting roads?
Thank you for your question. It's Rosemary Draskovich with Transportation Engineering. That's correct. So the city defines roadway classifications as a function of their access. So arterial roadways are generally people movement as the primary consideration versus local roadways, where it's more of a land access as the primary function. And in this particular case, the west of Alma, west of the intersection at Alma, the roadway does, near to fewer lanes, it's a little bit more localized in terms of like local access, and doesn't consider as much people movement, so it is considered a more local street west of Alma. But the intersection itself at which the site is located is still a, considered an arterial intersection, because three of those legs entering the intersection are all considered arterial, and the intersection itself is providing movement, movement functions to the greater area. So the, what we call the corridor, the, the actual roadway leg beyond the intersection is local, the intersection itself is still arterial.
Okay, thank you. And then on the subject of, a number of residents also raised concerns around, in the context of sustainability and our green policies, carbon emissions from such a building of 14 stories, I, I believe it's concrete, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. In, in this particular project, was there consideration for use of low-carbon materials? And, and, and is that part of the broader pilot, but also specific to this, this project, low-carbon emission materials for building?
Thank you for your question. Carly Rosenblatt here from rezoning. So there is the green building policy for rezoning, which is universal across any rezoning, and this applicant has chosen to satisfy the low-emissions green building pathway.
Thank you. And then, just to clarify, I'd heard from a number of residents, they talked about there being a second rezoning. Are they referring, were they referring to the application, that there was the previous application that the, the applicant spoke about earlier, not an actual rezoning public hearing process?
Just 15 seconds.
Thank you for that question. So the first one that came in was withdrawn, and that was for the secured rental policy, and it's the second rezoning application that we've been, that's for you at the moment, under the MERP program.
Okay. Okay, that's probably my time. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Kirby, I have you on the queue.
Yeah, I'm hoping to move for another round of questions, just to complete an answer to one I had earlier.
Second?
Okay. Do we call yays and nays, all in favor of a second round? Say yay.
Yay.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, all reset your clock. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you. So, back on to the sidewalks, since the second part of my question, when staff had stated that improvements may include, and I think the language is widened sidewalks, curb ramps, and improved lighting, and I do have concern around the quality of those at this particular intersection, so I'm wondering if you can comment on if it's may include or will include? Will that happen? When might that happen?
Hi, it's Rosemary Draskovich with Transportation Engineering again. So there probably is a little bit of unclarity in the way the, it's written in the body of the report, but there are conditions in Appendix B for these offset improvements to be delivered by the applicant, so that will include things like widened sidewalks, boulevards, curb and gutter, curb ramps, street lighting, and lane improvements as well. Those are secured through enactment of the rezoning, and those are delivered by the applicant at construction.
Okay. And then related to that, does the city have any plans outside of the specific project footprint, but for that intersection as a whole, to improve that, so the overall intersection is improved?
So as part of the intersection improvements, the applicant, there are conditions for the applicant to deliver improvements to the intersection as well, so that will include things like signal improvements, as well as changes to the way the median is, like geometric improvements, as well as lighting to that intersection as well.
Okay. Because the lighting is quite poor in that area now, it's not a particularly friendly or.
Yeah, so a standard condition is that they upgrade the lighting to current standards.
And our new lighting that's going in is green-friendly, correct? We're moving away from old lighting and putting in new lighting standards now?
Yeah, all, all new lighting that's implemented as part of, like, median to date, and as part of new developments, all meets current, current standards for lighting and all of our green requirements.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the answer.
Thanks. Councilor Dejanova?
I'm happy to move the staff recommendations, Mr. Mayor, and I understood that staff also had noted a small error in the appendix in their presentation. I'm wondering if I needed to, to clarify that, to move that as well in the recommendations.
I can check with staff. I, we can just note that it's moved with the change. Does that sound right to you, staff?
Hi, it's Carly Rosenblatt here. The correction is not in the bylaw, so it should not have any impact on it.
Okay.
I'm half a second.
Sorry, oh, Councilor Boyle, okay. I couldn't catch your voice there. Great, okay, thanks. So I'll put us on the queue. Councilor Dejanova, you are on, you moved it, so you're first. Go ahead.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. First of all, I very much like to speak, to thank the speakers who, who took the time to come and speak to council, be it in support or in opposition. I really appreciate the engagement and the time, especially considering the late night that we had, and those speakers who waited even beyond 10:00 p.m. So it's not just about us staying, it's about them also staying, and I understand that people have other things to do as well. That being said, you know, in, in my considerations, and hearing the applicant talk about, you know, the clarification of B.C. Housing's involvement with the construction financing, also hearing the thoughtful answers of questions sent in by other counselors, that I hadn't even considered some of those questions, really appreciate staff's thoughtful answers to those as well. And really, in looking through B.C. Housing's rental supply policies, to look at what type of financing stipulations, including the lending criteria that is required, the missing middle comes up over and over and over. And we've talked as a council about missing middle housing, and we've talked about, I mean, in policy motions, and, and this is a public hearing, it's very much about this project. So let me say that I, I feel that if I truly support missing middle housing, in the way that we've supported it here at council, it's, it would, it would not be right of me to not vote in support of this, and pass up an opportunity for family housing in a neighborhood where we've already heard from staff that the vacancy rates are not very high. In listening to speakers who talked about, you know, wanting the opportunity, maybe, you know, this, this housing wouldn't be for them right now, but when they went to UBC, would they have liked to have had something like this? Or, you know, at a point in their lives, would they like to still have something like this? I mean, that made a big impact on me. We talk about the missing middle, and I think that, you know, that is especially true for, you know, the millennial generation, hearing that a lot, being, you know, considered quote-unquote millennial, myself. I also, you know, and, and I brought it up before, thinking about the next generation, and if, if we're the missing middle, then what are they? Are they invisible? Are they going to disappear? So for those reasons, along with the fact that, I mean, I think with MERP and the B.C. Housing construction financing, and I might even, you know, take the policy piece back to maybe a council meeting and ask staff some questions on that, but we have the best of both worlds. B.C. Housing requires 10 years for the rents to be, to be at a certain rate, to, to be able to move forward with eligibility for this grant. But I mean, as we've heard from our staff, it's going to be for the lifetime of the building, if not 60 years, and that's built into our agreement. Looking at the fact that the lending criteria is met, gives me comfort that this isn't just affordable in the context of what we've talked about at the City of Vancouver, but it's affordable in the context of, of B.C. Housing, and we rely on B.C. Housing often to support, you know, some of, some of those folks who have those core housing needs at levels of $375. I understand that this might not hit the mark for some people who still can't afford this housing, but I think it's really important to note also that, you know, this is something we talk about. Is there only going to be affordable housing or MERP projects on the east side? And I think staff did an excellent job presenting that. No, in fact, you know, this is a project that is on the west side. So I think as we consider housing, as we consider transit, as we consider moving forward, and really, you know, putting my vote where my commitments are to making, you know, transit friendly for people who, who want to live, not only close to transit and in a particular community like Kitzlano, but also for people who otherwise, and you know, it's not lost on me, my husband and I used to have many conversations, he went to UBC, I went to SFU, it's a bit of a rivalry, it was usually better for him, except in the snow for me, but he spent two hours each way on a bus back to South Surrey. So looking at, you know, in the context of providing more affordable rental along that, you know, not just looking at the Broadway plan, which I am considering in this as well, I just want... Plan, which I am considering in this as well. I just wanted to state so many of my reasons for support for this, Mr. Mayor. And I know I have five minutes to close, but I don't want to take that time. I really just wanted to state the reasons that I do support this. And I also support the thoughtful design. I know that that's in the eye of the beholder, but I appreciate that this is a little bit different. And really appreciate the lengths the applicant has gone to work with our staff and our staff's commitment to this project as well, to deliver housing for the middle income households. Thank you.
Counselor Boyle?
Thanks. I will be brief. I also support this project. I lived just a few blocks from here when I was, for part of the time, I was a student at UBC, and I stood outside the grounds for coffee there, waiting for the beeline. Frequently, it was a beautiful neighborhood to live in. The friends of mine who lived in the neighborhood, we all lived in private basement suites, was unstable housing. And I'm delighted to see more secure rental housing being built in the neighborhood for residents who live there, for residents who want to move into the neighborhood. I also happen to like the look of the building. And I know we have design panels, and I don't think that the aesthetic of the building is up to me, but wanted to add that I appreciate the work that has gone into making the form fit and look nice in the, in the neighborhood. And as I said, I think the most critical part is that there are renters who would like to live here, who are looking for secure, stable housing, and this will be a welcome building to allow them to, to call this neighborhood home. And I'm glad to be able to support it for that reason.
Thanks so much. Counselor Hardwick?
Thank you. So let's walk through the logic of this application. First, this application is being brought forward under the MRRP program, which gives developers the ability to construct out of scale 80% market rental buildings in exchange for 20% affordable rental. And the city foregoes significant revenue in exchange for these units. The logic behind this is that there's a crisis of rental scarcity in the City of Vancouver. The MRRP program is justified under the Housing Vancouver Strategy Targets for Affordable Housing. And on the subject of these targets, council has yet to receive the underlying data which council directed staff to provide by the end of July in the recalibrating Housing Vancouver post-COVID-19 motion passed in May. The larger concern here is the city is following policies that are based on aspiration rather than evidence. And this may be why, as expressed by former planner Christina DiMarco, the staff report on this application appears to be more of rationalization rather than an evaluation. So following the logic, MRRP is based on Housing Vancouver, which targets are aspirational. MRRP then is empowered to supersede all existing planning processes, and this includes the Point Gray Community Vision approved in 2010. In doing so, it sets a precedent for future planning processes, including notably the Jericho Development Broadway Plan, not to mention the Vancouver Plan. So none of these time honored planning processes matter because we're told repeatedly that there's a housing crisis in Vancouver. And this narrative, I believe, is based on promoting growth rather than managing growth through a planning process focused on livability for residents. And it begs the question, why? But putting aside the fact that the Housing Vancouver Strategy is based on aspiration, let's go back to MRRP. The logic here is that there's less than 1% residential vacancy in the city, and clearly that has changed. The availability of rental stock has increased since the pandemic and the virtual collapse of Airbnb and the withdrawal of thousands of foreign students. And if we could press pause, we might wait for the results of the 2020 Market Rental Survey undertaken annually by CMHC. And we should, that ends up at the end of this month, and we should see those numbers in January. So let's look at the conditions for the MRRP projects. MRRP guidelines for additional heightened density state up to 14 stories at the intersection of two arterials. Well, the arterials are not arterials. Anyone who lives near knows that the West Broadway arterial terminates at Alma, and then the arterial corridor jogs up to West Tenth. And as a result, the south elevation is not an arterial, but a quiet two lane residential suite. MRRP guidelines state the projects must consider and respect traditions to surrounding areas and homes and neighborhood context is important. But the application is seriously out of scale in relation to the surrounding uses, has serious overshadow, overlooking impacts, and is almost four times the height of recently constructed buildings in C2 zones. So why are we recommending it if it doesn't comply with, with the MRRP guidelines? It undermines holistic planning and sets a premature precedent. And I don't understand why the city seems to have abandoned its legacy of neighborhood based planning. So in the end, no confidence in the Housing Vancouver Strategy Targets. They're aspirational, not evidence based. No confidence in the MRRP program, given the lack of evidence and false assumptions. And again, it makes me crazy hearing that we're looking at numbers back to 2016, which was at the top of the gold rush. And no confidence in this application. So what is the right thing to do? What can we do to strike a balance as the costs outweigh the public benefits? Well, West Bank, the developer, let us know that the economics were sound to deliver a six story secured rental building. So I support that option being explored, but do not support the application before us. The six story alternative helps well with business neighborhood revitalization and is more compatible with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll let you start with the good points of this project. The good points are there are 32 MRRP units, and they are affordable. Rents are no more than 30% of gross household income. And I do note that I had actually amended into the MRRP program when it was launched in 2018, that stipulation. And I'm pleased to see the delivery on it. And I think it's particularly important in an area where secured purpose built rental housing and affordability are a challenge. Secondly, the design changes. I'll leave us difference opinion in terms of the people who came to speak to us on that. I think the slenderer tower and the revised plan, design was actually a much better one. And I think we had a number of people speak to us in support of it. Thirdly, the importance to local business of putting a lot of rental housing into an area. And when Michelle Burrell of the West Broadway BIA made it very clear that the expectation would be residents of the 161 rental units would support local businesses with a potential $1.5 million a year in local spending. That's a good thing, too. And finally, the waiver of the CAC. Staff evaluated the 32 MRRP units at $5 million, i.e. $156,000 or so a unit. And to me, that's not a bad trade off. But I do have concerns. First of all, neighborhood fit and transition to neighboring homes, which is a requirement of the MRRP program. There's only one high building in the area in the neighborhood. It's two blocks away. It's nonconforming on lower grounds, as we have learned from speakers, surrounded by gardens, a pilot project, and a one off in this whole area. This building is tall, it will saddle homes, and it does transition to the surrounding low rise area. By staff's admittance in terms of the form, this is one of the situations where the fit in terms of built form may not be there in terms of the context now. But they stated that in the policy context in the future, that it will fit with the high likelihood of higher buildings, nearby Jericho lands, redevelopment of this particular area. If there's a Skytrain that does go through in this corner, there's a subway station. But I do want to say that that future has some uncertainty. And that uncertainty, I think for me, it used to feel so uncertain, but with COVID, things are feeling more uncertain. So I just need to, you know, recognize that. Plus, I really do believe that staff did say this, that, and some of the speakers did as well, that if that future is played out, there is an expectation of a, of a station planning process, like the Joyce Colley One Station Plan that, that, or Pusant Plan that on last council I voted for. I am concerned with setting a precedent with one off decisions before we actually move into that important local planning. Finally, is MRRP working? I thought a lot about this because I did support it. I was very happy to see the actual inclusion of true affordability at first time in our, in our affordable housing programs. The goal of MRRP is to get private development industry to deliver affordability. It is a pilot. It tests what incentives are needed. And in this case, it seems like lots of height. In all cases, waivers of CACs and GCLs. As I said, I'm okay with the waiver of the, of the CAC, GCL at $156,000 per unit. It is a lot less than some of the projects we've seen where I've been very, very upset, and upset enough to vote against some other projects when it was like over $600,000 CAC waiver or GCL waiver per unit. But I do continue to have concern about the height. And in this case, I don't believe that the height is a good trade off. I don't think it is in the best public interest. And I think, for me, it's recognizing that our city is not going to be all the same everywhere, and it shouldn't be. I think the beauty of cities is when they have a variety of different kinds of areas, neighborhoods, different heights of buildings, different kinds of landscapes within them. I think that that is the charm and the attractiveness of a city. It doesn't mean that there won't be more heightened density. I totally accept it, and I think the speakers did too. But in this particular case, I think it precedes what needs to be a good discussion and, and buy in on that. And I think we do need to evaluate that kind of height in the MRRP program. I'm not sure that that, that is the way we need to go or should go in terms of the way they deliver affordable housing. So I will be voting no.
Counselor Domino?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to staff and the applicant, as well as to all of the speakers who both wrote in or sort of spoke, and then those who wrote in submissions to council. Couple of considerations for me with respect to this proposal, obviously as part of a broader pilot. And I was asking questions earlier about conforming to policy because I heard a number of residents express that there was a lack of alignment with the existing neighborhood vision and plans, as well as it was a spot rezoning. And was trying to get that clarity in terms of informing my decision about how this fits and within that interim rezoning policy. And heard from staff that it is in compliance with that in terms of meeting the test of affordable housing and, and secure rental as well as while there seems to be different perspectives on arterials that, that this is indeed two arterials that meet.
There is.
Okay. Please let me finish, Counselor.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Please go on mute if you're not speaking.
Anyways, I heard there was certainly a split in terms of the public feedback. And I think a lot of that does center around process and the lack of an overarching city plan, and, which is why I supported the city plan and appreciate that Counselor Carr brought that forward and that that work is being undertaken. This being said, I'm also trying to consider the housing needs of not only the residents of today, but the residents of the future and our young people. And we've heard very clearly that the need for rental, market rental, it was confirmed to gain the, a healthy vacancy rate. We're not there in the city. And, and that this is one measure, and we know it's a trial, but it is one measure of addressing that supply and the need for particularly also the missing middle, as Counselor Dejanova talked about. And that's one of the pieces I appreciate about the current pilot as well as this proposal, is it does provide 32 units of below market. It is, there's a rent freeze. And so addresses some of those affordability issues. It's not a silver bullet. It's not perfect, but we did hear from some employers who mentioned that that's still one of their challenges around employees. I think from a location standpoint, I mentioned earlier the intersection, but also I heard from residents the importance of revitalizing the commercial area, proximity to transit, proximity to the university. And we are in a unique time right now. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what the future is going to look like in terms of the city, COVID. But I, you know, I do believe we will get through this, and I think there will be some return to normalcy. I don't think it will be the same. But I do believe we need the housing. And I want to acknowledge there was a couple of callers, residents who live in the neighborhood who phoned in, I think it was yesterday. One was a homeowner who actually said he lived 100 meters away and that the shadowing in the building would actually have an impact on, on their home in particular. And, and yet, while that was the case, he was still supportive of the proposal and saw the merit in it in trying to enable additional housing options for residents in the city. And as well, someone else who called in, a woman who talked about the displacement of renters, particularly in, in some rental situations will be quite unstable, particularly with private homeowners where they may sell a home and so a rental suite disappears off the market and people are forced to move where that, that the intent being here, secure market rental. And so that can allow families to stay in one place and send their kids to the same school, not have to move around the city. And I think that was a really important point from my perspective. And so with that, just to conclude, I appreciated the different perspectives, and it is a challenging conversation. And I know that we have further work to do as a city around the city plan. But at this point in time, I think we should proceed with this proposal and enable that housing because we're still going to be several years out. I mean, this isn't going to be there tomorrow. We're going to be several years out before that actual supply is in the market. But I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weep?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank all the speakers, staff, and the proponents for the work that's been done to get the project where it is right now. I think the livability of the project has been greatly increased through this process. I think having the open windows and airflow is important. I think having the 15th floor amenity space be available for everyone in that building. So you just picture a young family who's been able to move back to this neighborhood and be able to sit there and read a book on that 15th floor and have that amazing view, and be able to have the neighbors' parks and area, which we all love. I mean, this is an area that I knew well, going to Limelight Video to get a movie after grabbing a little dessert from the dessert place. And it's a great little date spot there, maybe grabbing some snacks. So I know the corner well. I think it's a corner that we heard a lot of passion from the neighborhood. And I think we have a lot of work still as city council to improve this process so that communities feel like their voices are being heard and their neighborhoods are being respected while ensuring that we are bringing in new neighbors and that those neighbors that come into new projects feel welcome in the projects that they have. So for me, the natural assets of this project are impressive. Over 80 new trees on one small project to me is an impressive element from the landscape architect. Really like the accessibility of this project. One thing I struggled with was the fact that we're trying to deliver a certain type of commercial space as well as a MRRP project for rental housing. I think the rental housing is critical and important, but I don't think the mezzanine on the commercial space, if we're trying to do community oriented retail, is as important because it increases the height of the building. And we saw that as one of the concerns. So I have submitted a conditional amendment on this project. And the conditional amendment really looks at ensuring we keep the commercial sized retail. So making it a smaller square footage is to reduce the building by, not only reduce the height, but it will also reduce the foreprint and the FSR. However, it still delivers the affordable housing we're looking for, and it really delivers the commercial spaces that we want. And so the goal here is to make sure that we are delivering the needs while respecting what is needed for this area. I think there's other developments in the area that can have the mezzanine style retail space, and I think we need to come to that balance. So this is amendment that has just been sent. So I'm wondering if we could take a five minute recess for counselors to read this amendment because it is quite large and detailed.
In fact, Counselor.
I'll second that.
Yeah. In fact, Counselor Weep, I will be checking, just because of the quasi judicial nature of this, I'll be checking to see that it's in order. But, so I'll do that. While I do that, I'll, that should give counselors some time to, to review it. And so, stop your timer, Counselor Weep. I am going to check with the clerk and others to see if this is in order, and I will come back to council while you have a chance to read it. Okay. Now you.
In fact, Counselor.
I'll second that.
Yeah. In fact, Counselor Weeb, I will be checking, just because of the quasi judicial nature of this, I'll be checking to see that it's in order. But so I'll do that. While I do that, I'll let, that should give counselors some time to review it. And so stop your timer, Counselor Weeb. I am going to check with the clerk and others to see if this is in order, and I will come back to council while you have.
So I need it, if it's going to move ahead, we need to have it seconded.
Second, Counselor Dominado.
Okay. So I'll put us on the amendment queue. Counselor Dejanova, please go ahead up to five minutes. This is debate.
Thanks very much. Mr. Mayor, I was hoping through you I could ask a point of information to staff.
Sure.
And I'm sorry to put them on the spot, but I wasn't anticipating this. The mezzanine level, just in looking through the report again, to refresh myself on what the mezzanine would offer, is this offering space that would be used for people who were shopping at the commercial space as well as, you know, potentially people living in the residences? I'm just thinking, I need that question answered before I could move on because thinking about distancing, I'm not sure, you know, what types of commercial uses we'd have here, but could there potentially be some outdoor options for those commercial spaces in this mezzanine space or at least people to kind of enjoy their, whatever it was, you know, coffees on this mezzanine?
Steph, any shots at that one?
Hi, this is Paul Tang, Senior Development Planner through the City Manager. The mezzanines are often something that's useful for commercial retailers. We see them often in other areas of the city, but not all areas of the city. We see them in some of the more traditional areas such as Chinatown and Gastown. A lot of the time, the mezzanines are used as the actual bona fide office area for the business that's running in there. Sometimes the mezzanines are actually the area that is used to serve customers, such as a restaurant might have the mezzanine where people have extra tables and can be occupied by customers. So there's lots of flexibility with respect to when mezzanines are offered in a commercial retail unit. So with this motion, what's being suggested is, what's being suggested is that these particular commercial retail units would not have that mezzanine option for that kind of flexibility.
Okay. And I would suppose, I can't ask the applicant questions, but this could potentially limit what types of of commercial uses the applicant was able to attract?
I can't, I can't tell you exactly to what extent, but perhaps to a particular, certain extent, there would be less flexibility for the types of tendencies that could operate in, on the floor space.
Okay. And similar to what we were talking about in different project, this would include sort of pandemic measures where people need to be distanced in a certain fashion or amount of, like right now, it's two meters, six feet. But if we're continuing on with that or find ourselves in that situation again, more space than less with commercial retailers can sometimes be a good thing. Is that correct?
I think I would only, I can only agree with you there, Counselor. I, I think if there's less space to be occupied, that means that there's less people that can occupy the space.
Yeah, if I, could I jump in, City Manager here?
Can you not take all of my time up? If you can maybe just take 30 to seconds to a minute, leave me 30 seconds to comment. But thanks. Yes, Ms. Johnson, thanks.
My understanding is that the, there may be implications and the townhouses might be lost with this amendment. So maybe I could ask.
Oh, wow.
Hardly or Teresa to jump in, please?
Sure, if they can leave me 20 seconds.
Okay.
Yes, I'll be quick. Thank you. It's Yard Living Deal, Senior Res zoning Planner. If we remove the mezzanine, we will need to understand that we're moving leasable commercial space. There could be implications to the applicant for that, and we could lose the three townhomes off the lane.
Okay. I was looking for that actually, and I didn't see that information specifically in the report that this was integral to that. But for that reason, I won't be supporting this, although I do appreciate, you know, the sentiment and what Counselor Weeb had said in his statement he was trying to achieve. But I'm just concerned that, especially with townhomes, that knowing that we don't have an abundance of townhomes in our city, and they do offer opportunities for families and missing middle housing. For that reason, I, I won't be able to support this amendment, but support what Counselor Weeb was trying to do. Also concerned about limitations to the commercial space, but definitely knowing that the townhomes may not be able to move forward. I won't be supporting this. Maybe the viability of the project would be questioned, but I only have 13 seconds and won't be able to ask staff that question. Maybe someone else will, but for that reason, not supportive at this moment.
Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thank you. I'll follow up. I'd like to ask a point of information through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff as well. Thank you. And Counselor, did you know that I asked my first question with respect to the mezzanine use? So zeroing in on the townhomes, and I'm looking at the language in the amendment that says forces to be removed include the upper level quote of the three townhouses along the west side of the building. So in addition to the potential of losing the townhouses and the diversity of housing types on the facility, do we know at this point if a commercial loss as well as the townhouses would affect the financial viability of the project, given that we're, it's aiming to provide those 20 secured affordable units in perpetuity? What would the impact be on the financial viability of the project?
Hi, Counselor. Yard Living Neil responding back. At this point, we don't know. We're just confirming, no, that we would be losing leasable commercial space, and there's a potential that the three townhomes along that side property line may not be viable. So we can't give you a definitive answer at this point, other than to know that there would be an implication to the owner.
Okay. But staff, read this amendment. Quick follow up there. Staff, read this amendment that essentially we would potentially be losing leasable space as well as three townhomes for a reduction of only four feet in total height. Is that right?
The, the townhomes are two stories and.
No, on the total height of the, the total height of the building because the amendment references that it would save an overall total of four feet off the 172 foot height of the building?
That's correct because we still need a viable commercial space, which needs a minimum ceiling height. So the reduction in the amendment would be limited to around four feet in building height.
Okay. So thank you for that answer. And speaking to the amendment, I will not be supporting the amendment at this time. I think if there are concerns about the height of the building, counselors have the opportunity to simply vote for or against the project. But from my perspective, I like to support a variety of housing types, and I think the townhomes are an important aspect of that. I'm also not comfortable voting on something that could potentially jeopardize affordability on the project. And my, thirdly, my third consideration and concern would be that we've had other projects come before us where we have actually applauded the increase in the commercial space height in order to allow for more flexibility of uses that we haven't had in a lot of our CRUs in the city, such as those mezzanine level restaurant table seatings that provide for character or that provide for that sort of office space and make it more functional and flexible for our small business. And we're trying to support our small business in the city. We also know that we've had COVID and the ability to give any restaurants, for example, if their tenants flexibility to spread people out is also really important. So for those three reasons and considerations, I will not support the amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Boyle?
Thanks. I had a number of those questions and just have one more through you, Mayor, to staff, if you'll let me, which is, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the purpose of this amendment. And I'm wondering if, if staff have any information on whether there are different types of businesses this would attract? Like, is this about having more small local businesses than larger big box businesses? Or would it not have an impact on those sorts of factors?
Through the mayor, thank you for the question. The building, the ground force been designed so that a variety of different commercial tenants could be attracted to that site. At this point, the plan showed that there could be four CRUs, but that could combine into larger areas if there was a viable tenant that the owner was willing to consider.
So this, this height difference wouldn't make a difference in terms of the types of commercial that would go into the property?
Well, to be fair, I think it could for a number of different tenants that were looking for that kind of double height space for their business that they feel that might be increasing their retail attractiveness. So it's, it's there for a reason because the owners consider that that's helping to help sell that commercial space. And I don't think we'd want to preclude owners, business owners from whether they would be attracted or not to that kind of a mezzanine area.
Okay. But specifically in terms of kind of local businesses versus global chains, it, it's not a factor we see in those types or, or we would associate with those types of decisions?
No, it's not typical that way. So it would, it would be open to a number of different commercial tenants.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for going down that wormhole with me. I will then just say I also don't support this. It, it's maybe an interesting conversation, but in the very last moment of a long public hearing, it feels kind of unnecessarily detailed for us to go into. It's not a repeated concern I heard from the neighbors. I don't think a four foot difference is going to satisfy folks who were concerned about the height. And I can't understand the difference it will have for the types of small businesses that I hope to go in there, which are small and local serving. So doesn't, the process doesn't feel like good governance and the outcomes don't seem clear to me, so I won't be supporting it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Bly, up to five?
Thanks, Mayor. And actually, I see Counselor Weeb is back on the queue, so I'm hoping he might address some of the objections because that was simply my question was hoping for a point of information because I'm struggling to understand the full context here.
Okay. And of course, you, you still have your up to about, you know, four minutes and 45 seconds if you need it. Counselor Weeb, go ahead up to five.
Yeah. The one goal for me on this was listening to the public, recognizing, one, that we need to look at the massing, two, that we need to be more creative and ensure that we're getting community serving retail. Mezzanine levels are not accessible. They add extra square footage and operational costs. Most small businesses across the city struggle to pay for the extra square footage. We heard from staff that they could be offices, but you're still paying market rate per square footage for those pieces of property. As well as the opportunity to look at other buildings in the area will have the ability to do the double level commercial. We don't need to be trying to get double level commercial and all the affordable housing and all the projects on one site. I heard one of the speakers say this building does need to be all for everyone. And so the goal was here and understand it's coming in at the end, and it's, I think there's something that needs to be put through the process on how do we not make every building try to be everything for a neighborhood, recognizing that there's other opportunities for larger commercial space and buildings in the immediate area, and this building should have focused on the affordability. So that's why this motion is brought forward, looking at an option to reduce it to below 170 feet, recognizing that it does feel more like a 17 story building, even though I think the 15th floor is really useful. So that's why this is brought forward, is trying to look at creative ways to ensure that we do put the right type of product into the neighborhood.
Thanks. I don't see anybody else on the queue, so I'm going to call a vote on this amendment.
Mr. Mayor? Well, personal privilege, I need a vote assist.
Sure.
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, counsel. We have, the vote is in, the clerks can put it on the screen. That amendment fails with Counselor Kirby, Young, Bly, Dominado, Boyle, Swanson, Dejanova, and myself in opposition. So I'm going to go back to the main queue. Counselor Weeb, you have two minutes left. Anything else? You're still on mute.
Yeah, I will be, for the overall building, I will be voting in support, but I do think we have some work to do still and looking forward to how we continue to incorporate in our citywide plan. I liked our ideas of continuing to listen, but also recognizing that our neighborhoods are changing and that we need to make sure that that change is incorporated. So if this building passes, I hope that we find ways for these neighbors to be included into this neighborhood and really drawn in and be part of it because I think that we need to do more of that where people are embracing new neighbors and are excited about what that brings to their neighborhood and the equity and. what that brings to their neighborhood and the equity and inclusion that comes from this and the fact that these schools need these children. And so I'm happy to see these families. Great to hear from the proponent that there'll be more affordability throughout the eighty percent of the units and looking forward to seeing how we can develop this neighborhood, hearing the concerns from the neighborhood, because there are a lot of development sites that are within a few blocks of this property.
Thanks, councillor Fry.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks for everybody who came and spoke to this in favor and in opposition and for sort of exercising your options to speak to it. And thanks to councillor Weave's attempted amendment there. I do appreciate what he was trying to do, and I think that there's a there's a good conversation to have there in the future. I do know from work in this field and in the downtown east side local area plan where we we did identify that mezzanine mezzanines as a as a retail component did sort of trigger a higher price point and actually did affect sort of a gentrification play. So I think it is an important conversation to have when we're talking about retail continuity and and complete communities and what do these kind of premium pieces mean for for retail? And I think I appreciate councillor We bringing that up. So at first blush, I I did find this, I was, you know, when this proposal first came down the pipe, I was thinking, whoa, that is an ugly building. I can't possibly support that. I do think the first iteration of this building was 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 not a good fit. I do think that the subsequent design is imminently better. And I really do appreciate the work that the architects and developer did in responding to some of those initial concerns and actually coming up with what I consider to be a far better looking building and more responsive to the neighborhood fit. I do think that, you know, I've, this this project checks off a few boxes for me. Number one, there's there's absolutely no displacement. We're looking at, you know, a retail replacement, a vacant lot next to it. I think there's some really good design and landscaping elements that are coming with this building. It's obviously regardless of whether or not we have a subway to UBC or not, we still have the the beeline traveling right by this front door. So it is on a on a pretty important transit corridor and obviously directing folks straight out to UBC from there is is a big piece of of this location. The MERP project, I've, you know, I've been very critical of DCL waivers in the past. And I think even now, as we look towards our climate emergency action plan and the kind of spending that we're going to have to do, I'm 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 trepidatious and I'm concerned that when we give away all these DCL waivers, we're not financing appropriately to cover these kind of expenses that we're going to be incurring when we talk about response to the climate emergency. So I I do flag that. That being said, the MERP policy I do support because I appreciate that it's, A, a policy and we've set that parameter and and we see now the industry is responding to it. And B, it 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 affects this whole sort of notion of vacancy control and tying the the cost to the unit so that we're not seeing where, you know, I remember very distinctly when we first had this conversation and councillor Swanson had asked the question of of one of the developers, the proponent for a particular development about about future rents and 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 he admitted as much as the model was designed to ensure quick turnover and an ability to escalate the rent. So I do support the MERP, and I think it's important to follow through on that commitment. You know, as I was looking at some of our climate emergency stuff, it's one thing that we don't talk enough about is the fact that Vancouver as a city, as a North American, so we are the third densest city in North America. We're just a little bit behind San Francisco in terms of density. But if you look at the city of Vancouver, it becomes fairly obvious that the entire physical city does not carry the weight of that density. And we concentrate the density in 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 some key areas of town. So I think it's it's okay to spread out that density a little bit. And I think this is a fairly sensitive approach to the context of that community and and the existing vernacular and. Yeah, so I will be supporting this. And I just again want to reflect that I think that the MERP or it may not be a sustainable way to continue with the the DCL waivers for these kind of projects. And I'd like to see us move away from that and have have these developments pay their own way. I do certainly support the addition of much needed rental housing. I think this is a good location for it. I think it's a good design and I will be supporting this application.
Thanks so much, council. We're coming up to five o'clock, so I'll need a motion to extend to.
Motion to extend.
Second, councillor Dejanova, to finish the business of this item.
Okay, thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Great, thanks, councillor Swanson, you're up next, up to five minutes.
Okay, thanks. I've been going back and forth in my brain over this one. I have voted for MERPs in the past when I don't think there's going to be gentrification and I don't think there will be gentrification with this this one. But in this case, we have a developer who's getting four or five subsidies, he's getting eight extra floors of density, the DCL waiver, the CAC waiver, only has to put in twenty-six parking spaces, which makes the units a lot cheaper, and government financing, which makes everything cheaper. And this means that the city is going to have to fork over for the community amenities that developers pay for in other circumstances. So what do we get for giving the developer all these subsidies? We get the thirty-two units at moderate income, not low income, but moderate income. And those units will probably pay for themselves over the life of the project. So I don't think the developer is actually going to be losing anything on them. And then what does the developer get? Hundred and twenty-nine units in Point Gray, many of them with mountain and water views that can charge. At first, I thought they'd be able to charge as much as the market would would bear. And then when the proponents said, oh, we have to, they have to be for moderate income people. So I looked it up and the BC housing definition is seventy-five percent of median of average income, and that's a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So the rents for those units would be for a two-bedroom, thirty-eight hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. I would totally be in favor of putting this building here if it were all nonprofit and we could get some real affordability. I think we need to reexamine MERP. Why do we have to give so much and get so little? Do we really have to give that much? Is there a better way? Then I was thinking, people are saying, well, the vacancy rate is so low, we have to get that vacancy rate up. But the vacancy rate is not low for units to rent for thirty-eight hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. The vacancy rate is pretty high for those units. It's low for the low rent units, and the lower you go, the lower the vacancy rate is. So I don't think this is going to be a solution to the, it might be a solution to the average vacancy rate, but it won't be a solution to providing vacancies for people who really need them. So, yeah, I think we should, I'm glad that MERP is only a pilot, because that means we need to reevaluate it. I think it definitely needs a reevaluation. And I don't think we should be giving this much subsidy to private developers and getting so little. That's it for me.
Councillor Bly?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so I too, of course, think the the work of staff and always appreciate speakers who chime in and share with council their perspective. I think it's such an important part of this process and listened to some very articulate and well-reasoned considerations on both sides of this decision. So my reflection and considerations for voting on this project, which I'll just say, I I am going to vote in favor of this project and for a number of reasons. I think, first of all, the building design, to councillor Fry's point, I agree, the new design has certainly grown on me. When I first saw it, it felt way too sort of, what is the word? It just, I mean, I don't want to say that it wasn't a fit, because I never really liked that term. Everything's, the first time any sort of change comes in, it's always very challenging and then it normalizes over time. But I just think it's a more inviting design, the first, the the new, the new iteration. So I'm I'm, that's certainly grown on me and I'm happy to support that piece of it. I spent quite a bit of time in this area and often cycled to UBC on this particular stretch of road. And there is, there is some separation in the way that the setbacks from the sort of residential side. So I understand the argument around, is it a nocturnal or not? And I can see both sides. But I think the way the setback sort of pushed the the largest and and highest point of the building out onto Ulma strikes a good balance there. And then and then as it as it stages down back towards the the single-family zoned area, I think that's far more workable. I believe it's important to look at fair distribution of added density across the city. I think that that, since we have about twenty projects that under the MERP, I think that this is the right time with the right kind of project to distribute some of that density. I think part of that consideration is the spaces in local schools. There are, we oftentimes have to consider projects where we are at one hundred percent capacity in all of the surrounding schools and have to make a plan for families to arrange for school outside of their catchment areas. And we know that this isn't going to be the case for this particular location. So I think that's an important consideration. And with that density, that added density, businesses in this area are suffering. On a personal note, my own mother actually had a yoga studio in Jericho Village, about three blocks from the site that closed because of COVID. And she was there for eighteen years. And so I'm I'm quite, I'm quite aware of the pressure on small business in this area, and there's a lot of them. And they are begging for more people to come. And I was sort of struck by the Truconfections business owner who called in and spoke with us. And this is actually the site where her business was. And she also said, we really do need more people in this particular area. So I think that we can't forget this. Is MERP a perfect policy? No, I don't think so. And I agree with councillor Swanson and others that we need to do work around this policy and it is a pilot. But the fact that this particular project is going, is not displacing anybody, it's unlikely to cause gentrification, I would say. I'm not sure that it's precedent setting in the fact that we're going to get buildings that are like this right across the board. I think it's maybe an anchor, unique building that's going to start to help reimagine what this area could look like. And I think that that isn't necessarily a bad thing. And finally, I think, you know, as as somebody who currently is looking for rental options for my twenty-year-old daughter, it's it is, it is tricky. And so COVID has certainly impacted vacancy rates, but I think there will come a time sooner than we think where we find ourselves maybe in three, four, five years on the other side of this. And we want to know that we made decisions now that were enabling a lower dense vacancy rate or higher vacancy rate, I should say, than what we have now. And and so I think that that's actually going to continue. So I'm not sure I fully subscribe to the fact that although vacancy rates are up in the air right now related to COVID, that that's actually going to be a long-term projection. So with those reasons, for those reasons, I will be supporting this project.
Sorry, but that councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all the speakers that came out to add their perspective to this discussion. I thought that, yeah, actually, we had a good balance of speakers and heard a diversity of viewpoints, which is always important for council and and it's refreshing. So hopefully, some of that is being enabled by the ability to call in. But to this project specifically and to offer some thoughts without repeating what some of my fellow councillors have said, I appreciate that change is difficult in the neighborhood. And I was really struck by a comment that one speaker, one gentleman, made. And he said that eighty percent of these units are not affordable. My sort of response to that would be, is it a hundred percent are not affordable if we don't actually move forward with projects like this? Because we need to provide more diversity of housing choice and the options in the neighborhood are not for the fifty-three percent of renter households that we have in the city of Vancouver, the median income or people that are starting out and trying to gain a foothold and, you know, find, settle down and put down roots and and be part of a community. Why does that matter? I think it matters because we heard from the West Broadway BIA, for example, is that a lot of those small businesses are struggling to survive and they're neither without replacement for a customer base. And we're hearing and seeing that loud and clear in terms of the vacancy rates, and that existed prior to COVID. And that's an ongoing trend that I think we need to be cognizant of. So and even if those businesses can survive, they would have great difficulty and increasing difficulty to actually attracting and finding staff and a workforce. And the result, because people can't afford to live in the neighborhood, they're not going to travel as far, they're increasingly moving out of Vancouver. And that means that you are going to have a less vibrant neighborhood because you won't have those amenities to enjoy in the community. You won't be able to walk to them because they can't financially make a go of it and there's nobody to staff them. So I think I think that's an important consideration. I heard loud and clear the feedback that we got from a number of speakers that said, you know, we should follow our policies. And I agree, I think that's really important. And we are striving towards having more clarity around a Vancouver plan and a broader citywide plan. But in the meantime, we do have this policy in place and that is also one of the policies. And so the job within a public hearing is a fairly defined one, which is to look at whether something, an application has come in, if it has met the parameters of a policy and to look at it through that perspective as well as a number of other lenses. And I think the answer to that one is is yes. I do like the fact that there is a real focus here on this one in terms of supporting the interface in the public realm. I'm going to be asking that question in all public hearings and council reports that we come back around. And I think we've seen this highlighted during COVID around the importance of wider sidewalks, more room for people to move and not just from a health point of view, but from a from an animation point of view and the ability for people to engage and enjoy their their city and their public space. And I hear the Parthenon project cited so many times as as a one that people have really responded to, there's been a sort of a visceral positive reaction. The tables are always full, you always see people there, people have smiles on their faces. So I was really happy to hear that this would have a wider sidewalk of twenty-two to twenty-six feet. I also think honestly that this intersection needs a little bit of love. It needs some improvement from both a safety point of view. It's it's a little daunting, it's not a great experience waiting to cross on one of those corners. And so I'm glad to see that there's conditions in the appendix for the developer to deliver on, and I will be looking to see those to enhance that aspect in that public realm. But I think ultimately, we do need rental and to people that say, well, our rental, our vacancy rate may be increasing, and that may be true. You know, I know we're a couple of months away from seeing that in January. Maybe it's nudged a bit from over one to close to one point five percent, but we still have a real need to deliver that type of housing. And the other projects, this this project itself is a couple of years away in terms of construction and build and other projects such as Jerryl Colance haven't yet been fully defined, and those will also be a long time away. And we have some real needs now. I'll also say too, that I think, and I'll sort of wrap with this, that not just in terms of the retail aspect and creating that sense of community, but when we can't have essential service workers like first responders, and we heard from the firefighter, live in our city, that has a very real impact as well. If we can't have those people living amongst us, not just from a, you know, sort of a response point of view and safety, but also in terms of integrated community. So that speaker really struck home for me. So for, on on balance, for all of the reasons that we've heard, I will support this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, council. I just, I just have a, just a couple of comments. Is that a great project? I just think of the Tim Hortons down there, worker finishes the shift and instead of traveling all the way back to mission, they can just walk down the street and live in one of the MERP units. That's what I'm excited about is the diversity that this project is going to bring to the community. I think it's a great addition. And I really would like to thank council for all the work you put in here in this deliberation. I think we had seventy-five speakers. We went to almost eleven o'clock last night. And and also to the clerks who have made this flow and and also innovating by trying new technologies so we can, people can see us via video. So also to all the staff and the proponents, I think it's been a good process and looking forward to calling the vote, which I'm going to do right now. um, calling the vote, which I'm gonna do right now.
Um, point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, I could have vote assist, please?
Sure, uh, go ahead.
Yeah. Opposed?
Okay. Uh, clerks, if you could mark, councillor Carr opposed. Thank you. Uh, the clerks will bring that, uh, vote up on the screen. We have, uh, that has passed with councillor Hardwick, Swanson, and Carr in opposition. Great, thanks so much, council. Uh, that's item number seven completed, so all we need now is a motion to adjourn.
Still moved, councillor Dominado.
Second, councillor Dejanova.
Thanks so much. Uh, all in favor say yay.
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 Oppose say nay. Great, thanks, council, we're adjourned. See ya next time. Thanks, clerks.
Thank you.